May I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening. Welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for August 18th, 2025. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the July 21st, 2025 minutes. Any of the board members have any corrections or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just say they were extensive minutes and I think it was Fran's the last official duty with us and she did a good job. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Second by Caleb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Chair vote yes. So the openers have been approved. So we do have three public hearings on this evening. We do have requests for continuance for Wilder Street, so I'm going to take that auto order if the board members have no objection. Thank you. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Conomo Holding LLC to convert the existing two-family home at 353 Wilder Street to a three-family home. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Article 12.1 of the uses. So I was up at the site like about 11 days before the tonight's meeting and I noticed the sign wasn't posted prop-- there was a sign, but it was a sign for the ZBA and that was laying down on the grass. So there was no sign on the site. So I notified planning staff. They notified the applicant. So we did receive a letter from the applicant requesting the continuance. So any board members want to be heard on the continuance? If not, I'd make a motion that we continue the matter till September 4th.
A second motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries. The only thing on that, Peter, is once we notified them that the plan wasn't out, they went up and they wrote the new date in with like a magic marker type thing. Can you ask them to put the next date on it now? Yeah, I know when Jerry was up over the weekend, he could see it written in and then Dylan sent to me with the written in. But now that we have another definitive date for September 4th, if any of the neighbors are reading the sign, they'll think that hearing is passed this way. Hopefully they'll get the notice that we put it on for September 4th. So if you can notify them on that, I'd appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. So moving along on the agenda, the next matter is a special permit and a site plan, 558 Gorm Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by LML Investments LLC to construct two townhouses totaling six residential units at the above address. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 for development with more than three units and a special permit approval per Section 11.3 for four to six dwelling units on a single lot. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Casey Ferreira. I'm with Howard St. Hudson, representing the applicant's LML Investments LLC. So as you stated, this is a parcel located at 558 Gorm Street, which is just a couple hundred feet off the end of the Lowell Connector. And it is in the UMU, the Urban Mixed-Use Zoning District. Quick background, we were here in front of you early in May with the original plan that proposed six units. And before that meeting, we had received some comment letters from the various City of Lowell departments and then as well as during that meeting, we heard a number of comments here from the planning board. So later in May, May 29th, we issued a new plan set. Unfortunately, it was pretty much right before the next scheduled hearing, which was, I believe, June 2nd. So we haven't really had a chance to discuss that plan until today. So quickly, I'll take you through kind of the changes that we made to that plan that we feel addresses the planning board's concerns. And then also, we did meet with pretty much every department that was available and we have cleaned up all of their comments and their concerns. So I think the number one thing we heard from this planning board was the look and the aesthetic of the site, from density to actual architectural. So as far as density goes, we reduced the unit count from six to four as part of the new plan set. That'll consist of a single-family house that'll be on the southern portion of the lot and then a triplex that'll be on the northern portion of the lot. While we reduced the units, the FAR is still somewhat near where it was because what we did was instead of making four units, we only reduced the triplex a little bit and made the units inside bigger to have more comfortable triplex units there. But also what that does is that opened up the garages for a little bit more space as well to help engineering be comfortable with the two cars that'll be parked below each unit. So moving into that, one of the other concerns as far as architectural was how it looks sitting on the site with the triplex kind of sideways and moving into the site. So what we really tried to do was dress up that triplex to appear from the road as if it was just one of the kind of skinnier and longer single-family homes that you see further up Gorm Street. So the single-family home actually that we are proposing is just that. It's skinny and long to kind of blend in with those homes along Gorm Street. But we also dressed up the front of the triplex so that it appears as if it's the front of a home with a gable, an entry doorway in the front, several windows from, you know, the second floor, third floor, just to dress it up and give it that appearance that it really is just blending in with the rest of the neighborhood. Another one of the concerns that we heard from this planning board was the parking spot that we had at the front of the site was not aesthetically pleasing from the roadway. So as part of re-envisioning the site and how we can kind of create enough units with enough parking, we basically just decided that all of the parking that's required would be self-sufficient within each of the units. So we oriented the buildings as such that each of the garages could be accessed adequately so that there was no need for surface parking for the two per unit. We did add an additional one single service space behind the single-family. That's just as an additional space on there. There is additional space outside of the single-family home for additional parking if there needed to be, but we're not striping it as we don't want to encourage blocking of that garage as that was one of the engineering comments was, you know, striping spaces outside the garages and blocking those garage doors. Another one of the comments we heard here was landscaping. While we didn't tone down the landscaping plan at all to make more room for snow storage, additional room for snow storage kind of came out of the shrinking of the units and reducing to four. So snow storage as part of the landscaping plan is much more accessible than it was before, but we also added additional street trees along the front as much as the landscape architect recommended for spacing. So that only does allow three across the front, which was what was requested as part of the comments. But that really fills up the whole frontage with the buildings and then trees, three street trees and then bushes along the front there. There was another, I guess, question about Mastot's plans for the end of the Lowell Connector and what might be happening there. We reached out to Mastot and their response was that it's really preliminary in the planning stages of that project, so much so that they can't give us a definite answer on what the plan is. But they did give us the assurance that as developments happen along Gorm Street, that the Mastot plans will have to evolve with those in mind. So really, it's they want us to do what we have to do and they'll figure out how to address the street side when they come around to their design stages. We did include the resetting of all granite curbing along the frontage. Right now, all the granite curbing is practically flush, allowing basically access along the entirety of the frontage. So all the granite, and this was one of the engineering comments, all the granite there that's along our frontage will be removed and reset to the full six-inch reveal and the sidewalk will be paved behind it and reestablished. The last comment that we had to address was from Stormwater, which was they did not know who owned the catch basin that we intended to tie into. So we, as part of reaching out to Mastot, requested if that was one of their assets. They confirmed that it is a City of Lowell asset and not a state asset. After that, Stormwater Utility did a little digging, found out that it is indeed their asset and they are okay with us tying into it. So that comment is taken care of and all of still-- I met with Stormwater this morning. They are fully satisfied with the plan sets. I met with engineering last Wednesday. He is fully satisfied with the plan sets as proposed. So I believe with that, I'll turn it back over to you guys for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? If not, I'll turn it over to the public after that. No? Okay. All right, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? 558 Gorm Street. Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of the hearing is over. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to any board members, any comments and questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Vichet.
First of all, I want to thank the applicant because, you know, very rarely do we have a project come before us and we suggest reducing the number of units. We get a lot of pushback and we're always told economically it's the only way it works and, you know, inevitably we go round and round on that. So and you don't have-- it wasn't like you had a lot of units to begin with. So you reduced from six to four. So I think that showed a real effort to try to address the concerns of the board on the site. Also, having that single unit facing the street. I've seen that plan many times before. It's been used on Westford Street and a couple other places. It works. I know the house. So that'll work. I think with the three units. We've done this on School Street. There's one going up right now and it was a similar type of treatment. As a matter of fact, that almost looks exactly like what was proposed. I think your memo of May 28th, response to Peter's memo, pretty much addresses a lot of the concerns. We got a revised memo, but it was really only because of the fire department's update. Everything else was comments from the prior set of plans. Just so we're in perspective on the DPD memo is really not a comment on the revised plans. This is a comment on the original plan. And I think like, so you did a thorough job responding to those items. One thing, unless I missed on the original plan or the original memo, was how is the trash going to be handled on the site?
What we had decided was that each unit would be privately taken care of. Right? We're going to have the homeowners association will take care of trash pickup for each individual.
Okay, so it'll be private. Yeah. So there'll be no dumpster. It will be-- you'll have--
Dumpster. Correct.
All right. I think, and we've got the revised landscaping plan. I can see we have got the plantings on the street side. Also, the parking configuration. I think we've got, from my perspective, I think you've got adequate snow storage now at this point. So again, I'm pleased with the revisions. The, you know, Mastot, I'm also the board's representative to the Northern Municipal Council of Governments and we do look at the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan. That's not on the radar even on the TIP. So, you know, that'd be like somebody saying, you know, at some point, there's going to be, you know, some major change in the roadway. Clearly, it's going to come at some point, but it's nowhere on the horizon that we can see at this point. So I'm fine with that. I don't think that has an impact on what you're doing at the moment and it won't be for some time. And this, you know, you did meet with Stormwater Management today. I don't think we have final comments from them, so obviously we just want to make sure that they're pleased with the plan. But overall, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments. I think that, you know, from the original sample plans that we had, I mean, you took a lot of criticism from us as far as what was presented. And but you heard us and made the revision. So again, Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied with the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet. Caleb, any questions, comments?
All right, then. What member, Vichet, suggests, good job on taking in our concerns and comments into making a better plan. I think you have addressed all the common adequately and any of my concerns. So thank you.
Thank you. Lucia, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo my other board members in that we appreciate that you've made it less congested. I love the new site plan. I think the addition of these units are going to be beneficial to the neighborhood and the city. I do have a few questions on the elevation. Oh, you answered that question. Sorry. I was asking about the frontage and whether it was going to look like what it was on the elevations or what it looked like on the architectural renderings. I can see that there's a lawn area proposed to the rear of the townhouses. Is-- what is the proposed surface for the side and rear yard of the single-family?
Currently, it's proposed as grassed.
Grass? Okay.
Yep.
And then on the initial site plan, there was a fire hydrant?
Yep.
What happened to the fire hydrant?
The fire department does not want a fire hydrant on the private site.
And trash was my other question. You'd be answered that. Fencing. I didn't see any fencing other than the fencing that's going to be removed and what's going to remain. Is there going to be fencing or will the trees and shrubbery serve as the natural border?
Yeah. So the intention is that along the side, so our southern side and then also the northern side, that we would leave in place what's existing for fencing, but also use the landscaping as a natural buffer. The rear, where we're impacting the existing fencing, we're going to remove and replace that fencing to match the existing chain-link fence there, but nothing for a screening fence.
Okay. And there was some coordination that you needed to do with one of the abutters to move a fence? Is that right?
Yeah. So that southern, or not southern, sorry, I'm not oriented, the eastern abutter, that's kind of in the triangle that impacts the rear of our site, that fence kind of cuts through what we have as their property line. So as we move through into construction, we'll just, if they want us to take it down as part of our project, we will. If not, we'll leave it in place and fence around it the way we have intended on the plan.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sa, any questions, comments? No?
I don't have any concerns. I echo what the other board members say, that the plan's come a long way since we came last time. I give you credit for addressing the comments we had. I'm satisfied with the plan. So the plan, we need two votes tonight, one for site plan and one for special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions, that it's subject to final approval from the Stormwater Management Team and because I don't see it anywhere in here, that it's subject to private trash pickup as well.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The motion for the site plan, it's approved. Five in favor, none against. Now we need a motion for the special permit.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I said that I made the motion for the special permit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it backwards. So, okay, so the special permit's been approved. Now we need a motion for the site plan. I apologize for that. So now for the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan incorporating the same conditions as imposed on the special permit.
So we have a motion on the site plan. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Has indicated chairs, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. So the site plan has been approved and a special permit's been approved. Good luck. We wish you well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a great night, guys.
All the applicants are setting up council. I'm just going to read the advertisement. If you have no objections, okay. So we have a special permit and a site plan review at 125 Perry Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Perry 125 LLC seeking to amend prior approvals to construct eight additional residential units totaling 32 units at the location. The application also seeks to construct a parking area on the adjacent lot with 27 parking spaces. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires an amended special permit from the planning board per Section 11.3 and Article 12.1 for the proposed use and a special permit per Article 12.6G for the parking area. The proposal also requires site plan review approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for a property with greater than three residential units and a parking area with greater than 14 parking spaces. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Perry 125 LLC. With us tonight, we have Jim Zorbis. Jim is the principal of the LLC. We also have Mark O'Hara of O'Hara Engineering and we have Angie Verge of Angie Verge Landscape Architect and Design. As the chairman mentioned, this application involves a request to modify a previously granted special permit and site plan approval, which occurred back in June of 2023 for this property located at 125 Perry Street. We're also seeking a special permit pursuant to 12.6G in order to use adjacent land that the applicant has under control for purposes of infrastructure and additional parking. I've included a copy of the original planning board decision in the application materials for your reference. 125 Perry Street is located within the traditional mixed-use zoning district. The property consists of 15,408 square feet of land. In addition to that 15,408 square feet of land, the applicant was able to enter into a long-term lease arrangement with the abutting property owner, which is the trustees of the townhomes at Concord Crossing condominium. So that lease included an additional 19,188 square feet of land. The trustees of the condominium own the land that is directly behind and adjacent to this property. That additional land is immensely helpful to this particular project. It allows, as I said, for the additional parking and infrastructure associated with the redevelopment of 125 Perry. I've also included a copy of my recorded notice of lease so that, for your reference, and so that we can substantiate that we do in fact have that long-term lease in place with the abutter. By way of history of this project, as I said, the applicant received approvals from this board and the ZBA back in May and June of 2023 for the redevelopment of this property into ground-up construction of a multifamily residential building consisting of 24 units. The units, the proposed building was approved, that was approved in 2023, consisted of a ground-floor garage and three floors of residential units with eight units on each floor. The proposed building that we presented for approval at that time had a flat roofline. However, while finalizing the building permit application for going forward with the construction of the project, the applicant's architect proposed a pitched roof. That pitched roof allowed for a fourth floor of residential units. The floor plans for that fourth floor call for two one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units. That redesign appealed to Mr. Zorbis for a couple of reasons. One, we feel it's a more aesthetically pleasing building for the neighborhood, which is important to Mr. Zorbis. And two, and just as important, it helps to offset some of the substantial costs associated with constructing a multifamily building with a garage under. So that's the genesis of the redesign of the building. In terms of off-street parking, the original proposal required 48 off-street parking spaces. We were able to provide 46. We went to the zoning board for, among other things, relief for lack of off-street parking and received it. However, the inclusion of the additional leased land and the final design of the garage area allows for the developer to get much more parking than originally anticipated. So at this point, we have presented plans that show 68 off-street parking spaces where 64 is required. So we have more than sufficient off-street parking for the project. The significant revisions to the site design include the increased number of units from 24 to 32, of course. We've also increased the residential floors from three to four. The additional leased land now with the total land associated with this project now encompasses 34,596 square feet of land. And as I mentioned, we're able to increase the parking from 46 to 68 parking spaces. Mark O'Hara also made a few more technical revisions to the site plan that he'll be able to review in a few minutes. And in addition to the revised site plan, we have also submitted a revised landscape plan. That revised landscape plan provides for additional green space and landscaping in some of the leased area. It also allows for a softening of the facade along 125 Perry Street. Angie will review that plan with you soon. We were before the ZBA on July 14th, a month ago, and we received relief for dimensional requirements pursuant to 5.1 specifically for lot area per dwelling unit, usable open space per dwelling unit, and height of the building. There were two, just two conditions associated with that approval. One condition was that we make a note that the applicant note the granite veneer, which will be added to the four bumpouts along Perry Street. And the second condition was that the applicant installs signage for ingress and egress within the parking area. So, you know, obviously those conditions were not problematic for the applicant. We agreed to them and we received unanimous approval from the zoning board. We're now before this plan, as we indicated, seeking a revision to the original special permit, site plan approval for the revised site plan and a special permit pursuant to 12.6G so that we can use that adjacent land for parking and infrastructure. In review of staff comments, the first seven or eight comments just described the project and the permitting associated with it. So picking up on comment number, comment number nine, I think it is, the transportation engineer requests that the applicant clarify how many parking spaces will be in the garage. There are 25 parking spaces in the garage. There may have been some confusion with the initial architectural and site plan that was submitted with this round of the application. That may have confused the transportation engineer, but the plans that you have in front of you, and you should have had it in front of you in front of you for a while now, clearly indicate 25 parking spaces in the garage. That is what we are providing in the garage. Comment number 10 is a, is a request for bike storage within the garage. So our initial plans, our original plans that were approved did provide for bike store, common bike storage within the garage. But based on the developer's experience with his other multifamily property, both in the city and outside of the city, it's pretty clear that tenants are somewhat reluctant to store their bikes anywhere but within their units, their expensive bikes anywhere but within their units. And in this particular instance, we have a, a building that will have an elevator. We have a fairly spacious floor plan. So there's, the, any tenant can easily get their bike up to their unit for safe and secure storage purposes. As an alternative to providing common bike racks within the garage, we would propose that the applicant offer, on an as-requested basis, a, any tenant that has a bike can request that the bike rack be affixed to the concrete wall in front of an assigned parking space. This is a more efficient use of the space, and because we're not using up parking spaces for bike racks, we have plenty of vehicle parking within the garage. We have addressed this concern with the transportation engineer through DPD staff. We, we made her aware of our position and, and our rationale. She, her response to that was, well, considering that you have sufficient, more than sufficient parking at this point, the, the bike, common bike racks aren't as important to her, and it seemed like a reasonable solution. Comment number 11, staff, from staff refers to the planning and project management team comments suggesting that we work with DPD staff to soften the facade of the building. Again, to that end, Angie has revised the site plan, and we, we feel we have adequately addressed that, and, and we'll, we'll demonstrate that to you soon. Comment number 12 simply expresses that DPD is supportive of the additional eight units. Next are the actual comments from planning and proj, from the planning and project management team, which are essentially supportive of the application, but raise a couple of concerns regarding the facade and landscaping. Again, we adequately addressed that in the, in the landscape plan. The economic development team sees the revisions to the plans as an improvement from the previously issued approvals. And the rest of the comments relate to engineering, stormwater, and wastewater. So this would be a good time to transition the presentation over to Mark, so he can go through the site plan with the, with the board.
Thank you, John. For the record, my name is Mark O'Hara, and I work for O'Hara Engineering. I am representing the applicant. And I'm just gonna go over the revisions to the plans that changed since the first approval. As John had mentioned, we increased the number of parking spaces by providing 11 additional parking spaces in the new Eastman area that was expanded initially. We were just talking about this area as being, that we were including, but we're using the additional space behind. That would be 117 Perry Street. And as John had also mentioned, there was some confusion about the parking spaces within the building. Initially, there was less parking spaces shown. They were angled parking. But our architect was able to reconfigure the columns so that we increased the number of parking spaces within the garage, I believe by nine, but it's 25. So that's what brings us up from the required 64 to 68. So in terms of the stormwater, we're now capturing the runoff that comes off of this building. It is, it, it does have a sloped roof to the back. There'll be a new catch basin that'll, that'll take the runoff and bring it into the underground storage infiltration system. One other thing I wanted to point out was during our communication with stormwater, they had a preference for us to have an overflow. So initially, we didn't have an overflow. The water was gonna surcharge if it ever rained that hard and go across the grass and, and off-site. But Gordon Bergeron from the stormwater division said, if you can either overflow back into the sewer system or into the abutting detention basin. So I looked into that, realized that when this site was developed, they developed it for what's called a rainfall type III distribution, which is a hurricane-type event. It's a 24-hour event. But what the city is having us designed to now, regardless of how much impervious area is on the site that exists, we have to compensate for a total of one inch if you have an overflow, or one and a half inches of rainfall if you don't. So even though the entire site itself, I'm not talking about the Eastman area, but the entire site itself was all impervious, that building has been torn down, and we've accounted for the entire area as well as the additional parking with this infiltration system, and then with the overflow going into the detention basin. So we have addressed these, the, the stormwater concerns. We acknowledge that we're gonna obtain a stormwater permit from the LRWU, the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. I went over the, the parking spaces, how we were able to increase the number. John also mentioned about the bike storage behind the parking spaces. We will be remove and resetting the curbing. Right now, there is a bit of a reveal on the curb, probably about four inches on average, maybe between three and four. Over time, they would just keep paving, and they wouldn't raise the, the curbing. So all of the curbing along the front of the building will be reset to provide that six inches of reveal. As I mentioned, the overflow to detention pond, we're providing that as requested. Another item that came up was the dumpster pad, and there was some concern about whether or not any water from that area would go into the drainage system. So one of the recommendations by the city, they said, can give us some options. And we agreed to enclose the dumpster pad with concrete curbing. So they were satisfied with that. Another comment we got from engineering was a backflow preventer for the grease trap. These are the floor drains. Anytime you tie that into a sewer system, just to make sure the, the sewage doesn't go back, put in a backflow type of preventer. There has been a new sewer line that runs down the property, and we'll be tying in the sewer into that new sewer line. It currently feeds the, it was revised for the adjacent building. I believe other than that, I, you know, John and I, we had a brief meeting this morning, so I just wanted to mention that the expanded leased area went from 12,000 square feet and changed to 19,000. Mentioned the, the 11 additional parking spaces. And would be expanding the wall. So there is a six-foot retaining wall that was part of the approval for the original building. That's been installed, but we're gonna continue that retaining wall for those 11 additional parking spaces. There was one other comment that came up about the directional flow. As I, as I mentioned, before, we had angular parking, so it would have to be one-way, but we're still gonna keep it one-way because it just makes for easier circulation. So we will be painting up these directional arrows. And in addition, they requested that there be some signs so that the, the people who are living here or parking here are aware that it's one-way. So that's all that I have for engineering. I'm gonna hand this over to Angie, who is our landscape architect, who's now recently professionally registered landscape architect.
Thank you, and good evening. For the record, my name is Angie Verge, landscape architect with Angie Verge Landscape Architecture and Design, and I prepared the landscape plan for 125 Perry Street. The intention of the landscape plan is to thoughtfully revegetate the site through the addition of sidewalk planting areas, the restoration of native shade trees in the back of the property, and the inclusion of green lawn space to accommodate snow storage. Per the city staff comments, we revised the front facade, and I prepared a elevation drawing here to illustrate the intention of the plantings here. The proposed plantings along Perry Street include two layers of plants. The back layer consists of species and cultivars that will mature to a six-to-eight foot height, screening and softening the exposed concrete foundation walls. And then in the front of that will be a shorter layer of flowering shrubs that will line the sidewalk. We're also proposing to install granite veneer to the four concrete bump outs, and those are gonna be here. And that will just provide a little bit more of an upscale architectural detail, a little bit more of attractive appearance to give the property some increased curb appeal. And overall, the proposed plan includes 16 landscaped-sized shade trees and evergreen trees at or greater than two to two-and-a-half inch caliper going in, including three six-to-eight foot height evergreen conifers behind the dumpster pad. And that makes a ratio of approximately one tree per three-and-a-half parking spaces. All 19 trees are native to the Northeast U.S., 14 of which exceed 40-foot height at maturity. We're also proposing a solid panel six-foot height fence in front of the retaining wall along the back of the property. And the fence will act as a safety barrier. It will also provide screening for the abutting properties, and it will continue as a full enclosure around the dumpster pad. The plan does designate snow storage area as lawn strips that run along the back of the parking area, ranging from six-foot depth to 12-foot depth. A large mixed shrub planting will be layered in front of the fence, providing natural aesthetic to the parking area as well as an increased habitat value. The lighting fixtures that are included in this plan include line voltage area lights on 15-foot posts, and the lamps are dark sky compliant and energy-efficient LEDs. The lights will provide safety lighting to the parking areas and trash enclosure, and two wall-mounted lights will be placed above the garage entrance and exits. And I welcome any comments from the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you can see, that's a very robust landscape plan. But in summary here, we believe that, that what we are proposing, the modifications are in harmony with the City of Lowell Low-Fourwood Plan. We're vastly improving the site from its former use. We're adding 32 residential units to the city's housing stock, and this multifamily development will significantly enhance the character of this neighborhood, which is predominantly residential. The finished product will also substantially increase revenues to the city, both in terms of the costs associated with the permitting, the construction of the project, and the final product will increase real estate taxes to the city once the project is, is completely finished substantially. We believe that we continue to meet the criteria for issuance of the special permits that we're requesting and for the approval of the site plan, and as such, we respectfully request approval this evening. We're here to answer any questions or address any concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll open the meeting up to the public, uh, public, excuse me. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? 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 Hearing none. This time, I'll open up to the board members. Do the board members have any comments? Actually, let me just go first, if I may. So, so I did ask staff if they could give us a copy of the amendments from the last meeting. They did give us, first of all, the copy of the, the only one condition that we had, which was outlined in their comments to us to begin with, which was, I think, what was, oh, that, that they should, the applicant should obtain stormwater permit. So that was the only condition we imposed. But so I looked back at the minutes, and I noticed it was myself, Mr. Bichette, and Caleb, the three members here that, that evening. And I went through the thing here. I'm on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Geary, Mr. O'Hara, Ms. Bird, and Brenda, Maxin?
Genzi.
Okay, thank you. And no one spoke in favor, nobody against. Then there was a couple of comments. Myself, I said, I like the color of the building, breaks it up, architecture is good. What are the materials? Jerry said vinyl. Mr. Bichette, there will be a fence on top of the six-foot retaining wall in the rear, he asked, if they are eliminating the pitch in the rear. And Jerry asked, the site is essentially flat. They will bring in some fill and then retain it, and it would be more attractive building than the redevelopment version. Mr. Geary said that the front elevation change will be impressive. Currently, the building directly abuts the right-of-way, but it is only building on the street that does so. Mr. Bichette discussed the bike racks on the first floor. Mr. Zorbis said that there are decks for every unit. Everything will be electric in the building. Caleb said it was a great design. They have enough parking and, and provide the bike racking. Myself, I, I said I liked the architectural design. I was satisfied with the parking, plenty of snow storage. I also asked about the stormwater permit. Mr. Geary said they would take care of that. Myself as the chair made the motion, second by Mr. Caleb, for the stormwater permit. That motion passed. And then the second motion, so because one was the site plan, there was a special permit, motion by myself again, second by Caleb for the approval of the special permit with the same application. So, and the final vote was three in favor and none against. So trying to bring out the board members up to date who weren't here, and refresh our memory from back then. So I just wanted to get that out for everybody else first, to hopefully refresh in some of our board members and other people up to date. So by saying that, I'll go back and turn over to board members, and I'll hold my comments to the end. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Bichette.
So just, you know, going down Perry Street, brought back some memories here. You know, looking forward to this project getting completed. If you look at the, I was really impressed with the Old Mother Hubbard site. And if you're investing in that area, you've gotta be happy with that. It just goes to show, you don't need a lot of landscape area for it to look nice. The shrubbery is impeccable. There's a little bit of grass area, and it's all well-maintained. It's green, looks great. The car wash at the other end, they're keeping it clean. I drove by there yesterday, and there was a young man with a, a blue vest on that worked with a broom sweeping the street. So it really was this spot in between, right, that really needs to be renovated and revitalized. Even, I just took pictures of the, the garbage in front of your location right now. Just, you know, once that gets, hopefully, once, you know, you get people living in there and activity, you're just not gonna see that. I am very pleased with, you know, we've had landscaping plans come before us, and, and that's all they provide is the, the Latin name for the, the, the trees, and we've got the common name, and we've got the Latin name. So kind of a pet peeve of mine. And also, the elevations actually reflected the actual landscaping plan, because we've actually had elevations before presented to us that look very robust but don't actually reflect the, the plan that we're asked to approve. I think it's, I think it, it achieves what DPD had, you know, their comments as far as softening that, that look. You know, I don't think people appreciate, when you're adding parking, especially a, a parking garage or parking underneath, that adds anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 per unit. So that's, that's, that's huge. And I agree, you know, we, we really do look at the bike racks when we're looking for alternative forms of transportation, right? We know there's not enough parking on the site, and we know we're actually gonna attract people that perhaps don't even rely on a car as a primary, right, source of transportation. That's not the case with this site. It's more of a preference. So I, I like the solution. I think it, I think it's practical from a, from, just common sense, to be honest with you. I think it makes, it makes a lot of sense what's being proposed. I think there are people, based on the location, that will wanna have bikes, but, you know, you, you, they have some, they have some choices. So I, I, I like that. Geez, I remember, it's not, I guess it wasn't in the minutes, but I had commented, this was, this was a great opportunity to try to look, to do some roof gardens with the flat roof and, you know, the, the green.
But now you mentioned it.
Yeah, no, I was, I was.
Looking out to Conquered and all that area we had.
Yeah, I really, I really, that was a great opportunity. But I understand, that's, that's fine. The, the pitched roof, obviously allows you to get some more units. I think visually, it'll probably soften the look of the building, too. It won't have as much of an industrial look, even though you, you were doing a lot to, to remedy that. So I really don't have, I, I think, pretty much, the, the dumpster pad, though, I So I really don't have, I think, pretty much, the dumpster pad, though, I guess, so I'm just trying to understand, truck comes up to pick it up, how are you encasing that in a concrete berm or curbing to address what the engineering department had concerns about? I'm just curious, from a practical sense, how that would work.
Mark?
Yeah, so it will be screened with a fence, but the concrete pad itself will just have a berm on the three sides, except for the front. So it'll.
Will that, I guess, will that achieve what, I guess, the stormwater management team is concerned about? Have they seen that? Have you discussed that with them?
Yeah, in their comments, they offered, essentially offered, three solutions, and so one of them was to enclose it with a concrete curb, so we figured we would go that route.
Going on the berm around the pad to prevent runoff, yeah. I mean, again, that's not my area of expertise, I'm just trying to visualize, because if you're not going to have it in the front of it, a matter of fact, I might even trap runoff in that area, I'm not quite sure. So I guess we'll leave that to, I'd probably leave that as a condition to continue to work that out with. You know, they may have thrown that out of the suggestion, but they may have a different thought and practical application.
And we're open to whatever.
Understand.
Is the most reasonable.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah.
All right. Good, I have, Mr. Chairman, I really have no more comments or questions.
Caleb, any question, comment?
Yeah, I have several. I think the first one, I know Mr. O'Hara mentioned about the overflow, the overflow connection to the basin, and I see that there's a dotted line on one of the, oh, I think on one of the plans. Is the adjacent basin, I guess, units of it addressed in the arrangement with the landowner? Or, I just want to make sure that, I know it seems like it's added to the design, and that is covered by that lease agreement, because it seems like that basin seems to be on the other side of the dotted line.
Yeah, so the lease agreement that we entered into allows for the developer to use the property for any purposes for development.
Okay. So entire backside of the property?
Yeah, infrastructure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you can't control the water when there is too much of them, and they just go where you designed the pipe to be.
Right.
Thank you. I think the second question I have is, on the driveway, I see that, like, again, Mr. O'Hara mentioned, it will be one-way through the garage, but you have the two, how do I say, two-way traffic arrow on the, on the, one of the driveways. So is it as intended? And I see that they are 10 feet, does that meet the requirement of the driveway regulations? It seems like it's similar width to the bigger ones, so I was just wondering about that.
Yep. Yeah, so the concern was really for the interior going through. The people who are parking back here, there's no limits to one-way or whatever, so they can come in, park, leave. The reason we just put the directional arrows to begin with was because we initially had gone with that angular parking. And then when the architect said, "Hold on, we can actually fit perpendicular parking," it greatly increased the number of spaces. But we just figured we were going to keep this directionally going in this kind of clockwise direction, because you do have another building over here. It would be tight, you know, so it's really just for the interior. Like I said, back here, they can come and go as they please, whether they want to use this or the existing current main way in and out.
I see. And would the, I suppose that's north is on the right side of the plan. So would the northern driveway be a little narrow for two-way traffic, or we assume just cars will watch out for each other?
I don't have the existing width, but the width between the buildings is over 24 feet.
24, okay.
This one is a little bit narrower, this one is 23 feet. Oh, 22 feet. This one's 22, but this one's over 24.
Okay.
If you don't have parking, it's typically 20 feet wide, is, you know, the recommended minimum width parking. You'd like to go with 24 feet, but there's no parking here, no parking there, and they're both over 20 feet.
And I recall seeing the turn radius analysis with a fire truck and, and I want to make sure that that's.
Yeah.
Provided for this design already.
Yeah, so I don't know if you're talking about the fire truck access in here?
Going around.
Yeah, we did run a template through AutoCAD with their standard, whatever the maximum size traffic, fire truck they use, and it meets their requirements.
Okay.
That is included in the plan set, I believe it's the last sheet.
And have we heard from the fire department?
I don't know if we got any comments this time around, but that may have come up the original time, because I do remember putting together that fire truck access.
So the building footprint didn't change?
The building footprint did not change, yes.
Okay, that's fair.
All we did was add these parking spaces with the retaining wall.
Thank you. Yeah, that helps. Yeah. Well, thank you. And I have another question, more with the architecture design, just, so you mentioned CBA require egress-ingress signs. Are they for cars? Are they for tenants? Can you tell me a little bit more?
Definitely for circulation of vehicles through the site.
Vehicles?
Yes.
I see. And there's a question I want to ask about, maybe I can put the landscape elevation view on that one. I just want to ask a little about the entrance element. Yes, so, well, I like the screening for the vegetation. I think this just masks the parking level, so that's, I think this is quite adequate. But then I'm surprised the entrance of the building from the street side seems a little simple. So, I mean, is there going to be, like, more details later on, like, a styled, like, street number, or like, or something like that? Or is there going to be, like, marketing about what this building's names is? Right now, I see a blank wall with a door on the left side.
Right, so that will basically be the as-built. There'll obviously be a street number on the building, as required by fire, but that, what you see is what we are proposing.
Okay. Are there, I suppose, would there be a light near there? I mean, there will be lights on top of the parking entrance exit, would there be a light around there? Just want to get some details on that.
Angie, does the landscape design plan show a light in the facade? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know there is also some wiggle room, as, like, you know, design changes, but I just want to capture that in our discussion.
Yeah, and Jim informs me that there will be lighting on all four sides of the building, so it will be adequately lit.
Okay. One thing that I didn't see in the floorplan of the garage floor is some of the interior of the, like, I see the parking spaces, but not, there is two blank blocks, and I suppose those are like the mechanicals or the entryways. So would there, are they just directly walking into a stairway and go up, or would there be, like, some common area down there for packages or et cetera?
Jim Zorbas. Yeah, so the main entrance is on the parking side of the building. So you should have in your layout, there's a mailroom.
There's a, okay.
Yeah, there's a package room. There'll be, you know, an area for maybe a couch, but it is very simple, and the structure on the Perry Street side is just an entrance and a stairwell.
Okay.
But the main entrance will be on that, on that bigger void that you see.
I see.
On the parking side.
Parking side. So from this door will be, will be go into the stairwell, and they can also walk past to into the garage, to into the main entrance.
Which one are you referring to, the Perry side?
The Perry Street one.
Yeah, so you'll have access from the street sidewalk to get in with a key fob, and then you could walk up the stairs, right? So you could gain access to the building.
Got it.
But, but we're thinking that most people will pull into parking and then want to enter from the backside, from the parking lot side.
Okay.
Which will receive the mail, packages, things of that nature as well.
Okay, I understand. I do have a little concern there. I know, I know, I mean, we designed a parking, but I don't want to be overtly auto-oriented. I mean, the street side, I think, does need a certain entrance, kind of, like, I guess, signals, just like the car is like, well, it's good that we have a whole row of trees, but then it's like, where is the entrance of the building? I mean, I have someone who is not familiar with the building. So I just want to add a comment saying that when you treat, have treatment of the street side entry, kind of keep that in mind, so that is not like, oh, this is just a back door. I mean, the back door on the street sounds like a little, like, less appealing. I mean, I have to care about how it looks from the street, even though your tenants will probably on the, you know, from the parking lot. So that's just a thought.
Yeah, well, it will be a glass storefront, you know, and we could dress it up that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything further, Caleb?
No, that's all. Thank you very much.
Lucia, any questions, comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Carl, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I didn't hear much about traffics. I'm a bit of a, you know, I'm familiar with the location. In fact, when I first moved to Lowell, that building there was my first job. I just, you know, worked there 34 years ago. So I, you know, I mean, and the Perry Street, it's a very tough and dangerous, you know, to go on to the main street there, the high street there.
Yeah.
Not the high street, Andover, I guess. So I wonder if, you know, I mean, is there any work that you've done with the city in terms of, you know, because I've seen the cars speeding up, you know, I don't know if you're.
Yeah.
And then with, you know, a lot more traffic, you know, a lot more people living on that, you know, so I just want to see if any kind of conversation, communication with the city.
Right, so we did receive comments from the city's transportation engineer, and they mostly related to parking and ingress and egress circulation through the site. There was no concern raised about parking, I'm sorry, about traffic to the neighborhood. Perry Street is a one-way from Rogers Street till you get to, I don't know if it's Oak. I, it's not Oak, but, but it's just beyond this building, it's one-way. When you get to that street, it turns two-way till you get to Andover Street, as you mentioned. We don't feel that the residential nature of this building would warrant any type of a traffic study or traffic mitigation, for that matter, and I think that if it did, we certainly would have heard that from the city's transportation engineer.
I, because, you know, I'm in.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, but the nature of a residential building is, you know, opposed to a commercial building, I think, is somewhat different.
That's just my comment, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Sure.
Comment, I want to point out, too, is, it was, I appreciate you providing the recorded lease as well. I know you just referenced a long-term lease, but it's a 50-year lease, so it's significant.
50-year with the right to extend.
To 25-year term, so.
Essentially 100 years.
Yeah, so I'm sure whoever's providing the financing is happy about that, but I mean, I think that's important to point out, because I think that's, you know, anything that would be a short-term lease, we've, you know, we've had projects in the past where, you know, they're trying to negotiate with a private landlord, but this is a significant lease that makes this work. I, just a question, am I missing in the plan sets, and, you know, they're smaller, and we don't get the full-size plan sets, but was there a lighting plan submitted with the plan set? Now, we, I, am I missing that, or did I not?
There may not have been, Bichette.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's part of the site plan, so I think, obviously, I would just make that a condition with DPD. I mean, there's certain requirements you have to comply with, right? So the glare can't come off the site, and, I mean, you have to comply with it, but to the line of questioning that Caleb was asking, and I know Ms. Berg had mentioned with the landscaping, some of the lighting, but, you know, we don't seem to have a lighting plan.
Yeah, and that's certainly fair.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just trying to recall whether we had one the first go-around. Yeah, yes, I mean, we're perfectly comfortable with the condition.
Sure.
Writing.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify that.
Let's see if we brought up the minutes before.
And then while you're looking, actually, Caleb, can you clarify, because I know you're commenting about the entrance of the building, so, I guess, because the entrance, the main entrance is going to be here.
Oh, no, I think it's up there on the left. Yeah, that block. I think this is the entrance.
This block is going to be the.
I'm guessing, right?
Could you, on the plan set up here, could somebody point out how that's going to, with the main, the main entrance, is how that, just so we have a good idea?
Yep.
So, okay, well, this is better. So from Perry Street, this will be your main entrance, from the street, okay?
Right, yeah.
And then from, from the rear of the building is here, this door front.
So if we're looking at the plan set here, the site plan, this is the main entrance here?
Correct, yeah. The bigger, this is where the elevator is housed.
Okay.
And this is Perry Street.
And what is this here?
That's the entrance for the cars.
Okay, into the parking garage, here.
Yeah, so that's the opening for cars.
Yeah, and then the exit here.
That's the exit, so entrance, exit.
Yeah.
What I consider to be the main entrance with elevator.
Okay.
Stairs, package mill.
Yeah.
And then street entrance.
That's more like if somebody's walking in and they want to walk in from here.
Correct.
Okay, all right, just trying to get the good sense of that. Okay, thank you.
Yep. I have another thought about that. So I know, like, again, I said, it will be important, I think, for wayfinding, but also this street appeal to, like, I know it's nice to have the vegetation masking the first floor, but I think you need some clue of, like, where's the entrance? So I know I've, I've worked in the mills before, they sometimes use, like, the, what is it called, banner that is hanging on the wall or something, or you may have some even better ideas that, like, maybe someone from the street walking down can know, like, oh, hey, that's where I can get in. I think that will add more transparency to the street experience, rather than, it's like, well, it seems like it's just a line of woods, and I don't know where to find the entrance of the building.
Our goal is to make the building beautiful, so as, you know, I think the finished product will be, you know, with the entrance will be representative of the overall beauty of the building.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure it's not like, oh, well, just a back entry that we didn't give much thought about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I don't have many concerns. I think everything's been addressed pretty well by staff and the applicant. As indicated, I indicated about the last time we approved it, I had no concerns. And obviously, I made a motion to approve. I think this design is a good-looking design. I like to see that you have the extra parking, which I was happy about with the parking before, but that's important. And I think the landscaping plan that we sought is going to be really nice, and I like the way, how you dressed up from the street, which was one of the suggestions from planning staff. As indicated, I mean, I have no problem with the alternative for the bike storage request, somebody wants that, if you're going to put the hook there, so be it. Like I say, a lot of people don't, and, you know, we do that a lot of time with the traffic demand management plan, as you well know, when we don't have many parking, and especially if you're right downtown, this way you have the cars, but some people still have bikes even though they do have cars. So, I think, you know, upon request, I think that satisfies any requests for that, so I think that's a good alternative. Besides that, I have no problems with it, I like the changes that you made. So, we need, for votes, we need a amended special permit for the proposed use, and then we need a special permit for the parking, because it's on land of another, and then we need the site plan review approval, so basically, I believe we're looking at three votes.
Correct.
Yeah, and one thing about, on Perry Street, I mean, when you come down, like I say, it's the dead end till you get to the very end, right before where the car washes, and even right before, there's the, there's another little auto body shop, I noticed some auto body shops at the lower part by Rogers Street, but at least that turns into the two-way, but it's only for a short period of time. And one thing is, when Perry Street does come out, at least that's when Andover Street opens up the two lanes going up towards.
Right.
The velvety section instead of the downtown area, so that opens that up a little bit for wider width. And actually, the other condos that came before us on Conquid Street, when I was viewing this, are coming along nicely, the ones that you came before, I think you were on that before, the ones on Conquid Street? You were on that one? I forget. But they're putting somewhere on Conquid Street that we approved.
Yes, yes, those are almost finished.
Yeah, right across from the liquor store there.
Sober's Market, right.
Yeah, yeah, those are coming along, cool, and I circled around that area.
Right, those are very nice.
They were coming along pretty well.
Exactly as designed.
Yeah, they look good, though. So, wow, yeah. So, okay, so what's the board's request? The first matter, I think, is the proposed requires the amended special permit, so I think the easiest part would be for me, Jerry, and Caleb to make a motion on that, because we'd be the ones amending our previous approval. I mean, obviously, other board members could vote on it, but I think coming from us would make a little more sense, since we approved the first special permit, so.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, with that, then, I'll make a motion to approve.
The amended?
Amended special permit.
Okay, amended.
With the following conditions, that the approval is subject.
Recording stopped.
So, Peter, do I have to wait for it to start again, or are we?
I think it tends to carry, why should it keep going?
They can turn into LTC if they want to catch the. So, subject to final approval from stormwater management team, I know you've worked to address those issues, but I just think there's, it's going to have to work out a few things on that. The applicant will provide bike racks as an option to individual tenants as requested, final lighting plan to be submitted to DPD for final approval, and that the applicant will work with DPD to accentuate the entrance on Perry Street, and again, I think to Caleb's point, I think there's just, doesn't have to be a lot, but I think there's a few little tweaks you could do to really enhance that.
We understand.
And that would then be my conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll second the motion. So, we have a motion on the floor that's made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, but that motion carries, so the motion is approved, five in favor, none against, for the amended special permit. So, now we need a special permit for the parking area.
Chair, I will make a motion to approve the special permit for the parking area with incorporating the same four conditions as the amended special permit.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Caleb, do we have a second?
I second that.
Mr. Sa, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair voted yes, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is allowed, there's five in favor, none against, so now also we need the site plan, required site plan review for our property with greater than three residential units, and parking areas greater than 14 for the site plan. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the same conditions as outlined in the amended special permit, and, actually, for the amended special permit and the special permit for the parking area with the same conditions. So, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lucia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, and the chair voted yes, so that motion is allowed also, five in favor, none against. We wish you well, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you. So, moving along, any other business? I believe Mr. Bichette has some updates, especially if Mr. Tenzel is watching.
So, Mr. Chairman, my, my greatest fear, well, I don't have to worry about that being an option of having to stage a groundbreaking for the Rourke Bridge, because everybody did see, they did have an official groundbreaking for the, for the Rourke Bridge, and the elected officials were able to, to really show up, and, you know, obviously, they were able to procure the financing or the funding, I should say, for that, and, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty substantial, but I think it's going to be, you know, well worth it, and there's real work going on out there, so it really is, it really is going to open up that area tremendously, and it's just going to be an asset to the river, it really is, so, getting happy to report that. My involvement was on the advisory committee for about 15 years, and, but, you know, it's nice to see it get to this, to this point, and I will say, there were several people on that, but a name that's familiar to the city who had some real vital input and comments was Adam Backy, was on that, was on that committee, and, you know, Adam is well-respected in the community, in the industry, and really, you know, provided a lot of insightful comments during those meetings.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any updates? Hearing none, I can entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Mr. Sa, second by Lucia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair voted yes, motion carries, we have adjourned, and thank you, everybody, good night, thank you very much.